Hey buddies, welcome to another episode of Morwith Tempo with me, the host Matt Stumpfo. If this is your very first time tuning in, I thank you for listening and taking the time out of your busy schedule. If you are a continuing listener or watcher, I thank you for coming back. I really do appreciate it. In this episode, I am excited to announce that Aaron Patron was, I'm excited to announce that Aaron Patron has come on for an episode with me. We discuss her roles and leadership that she's had in past careers and also with what she does with work now. She was just voted in just a few nights ago as the at-large city council member for the city of Greenwood. And her campaign for her running for that same position, because it was a caucus meeting, has also just started as well. So without further ado, I really hope that you guys enjoy this episode, learning more about our city council member, Aaron Patron. Aaron, thank you so much for taking the time out of your extremely busy schedule and coming on and talking with me on my podcast.
Thank you for having me. Thank you.
Perfect. So go ahead and tell the listeners and viewers who you are.
Wow, that's kind of a loaded question. So um, I guess a little about me, I grew up out in New Pal, um, New Palestine, Indiana, small town. And uh, you know, when I, when I was in college, I moved out to Greenwood. And I was going to IPUI and for a little while I worked as a volunteer firefighter actually in Greenwood over off Fry Road. It's just short, a short period of time until I left for the military, but very memorable. And uh, so I moved around the country for a while, into a couple of different states, Nevada, Alabama, Texas, and eventually landed back home. And uh, moved back out to Greenwood, or at least the, the south side back in 2013, I was working out at Atterbury. And um, you know, it just made it, it made sense to move back out here where it was a little closer. My, my parents, my mom had passed away and my dad moved out west. So I didn't really need to stay out in the New Palestine area anymore. So I moved back and uh, it just made it home. And you know, I, my kids grew up out here. They both went to Center Grove. One, one's still there. She's a sophomore. The other one graduated in 2021 and uh, she's a sophomore now at uh, IIPUI actually. And uh, she's doing uh, visual communications, which is really cool at the Heron School of Art. So super proud of her.
What does that even mean?
So she'll design like logos and um, like print and do all sorts of fun things. She said that she wants to, her goal is that she wants to work at Eli Lilly, which is where I work now. Um, and she's just enamored with it. And she said, I want to work there. So I know like the first, I don't know, month or so that I worked there, I brought home this uh, job announcement for a visual communications specialist at Lilly. I'm like, this is, this is what you need to succeed. So if this is what you want, then this is what you'll need to do. And I think at the time, she was at Center Grove and she was uh, at the, she was joining the C9 program for visual communications. And she said, okay, now I, now I know the path and she's, she's followed it so far. So we'll see.
That is awesome. So it seems like a lot of the stuff that you've worked for throughout your career has been a lot of like servant type jobs. Is that correct?
Yeah, uh, it's, I think, um, you know, between leadership and, and serving, uh, you know, you hear a lot about a servant leader. And that to me is kind of ingrained in me. And I, it's, it's weird because I did a, a program at Lilly for, you know, one, a group and it was about superheroes and finding your superpowers. And as I was writing the, the program, I was writing the content, I was thinking about, you know, we all think about, you know, our strengths. And then we talk about our weaknesses or what we call a kryptonite for doing the superhero theme. But I took it a step further and talked about the origin and where does the origin of these things come from? Like, why do we have these strengths? Why do we have these weaknesses? And so it made me think about to myself, like what is, where's my origin story? Where did that come from? And uh, for me, it came from my mom. My mom was diagnosed with cancer, leukemia when I was in seventh grade. And at the time they told her she had a year to live. And so, I mean, I really remember her coming to me and saying, promise me you'll finish college, promise me this. I mean, it was just a really, really hard time. And my dad checked out, like, I don't blame him. I love him, but like it was, he was going through his own depression and his own thing. And so I felt like I had to step up and, and take care of her. And, and I did. So having, being a daughter of a sick mother, and she ended up living 20 years. So she's, she's a fighter. She uh, she, she, you know, went through moments of remission and, and moments that weren't so great. But because of that and always having to, feeling like I had to, to be there to take care of her, to, even when I moved away, when I, when I would come back and, and I always came back and I always tried to, to do what I needed to do for her. And then, you know, towards the end, obviously I, I moved out so I could be close to her until she did pass. And um, I think that's really kind of where that servant leadership came from is, you know, um, that's, that would be my origin, I think.
Well, I'm sure that taught you a ton of life lessons as well. Some stuff like going through an extremely difficult time when things seem so dim and so low, but keeping that positive attitude.
Well, she did. Like she never, my parents were both teachers. They taught at Warren Township. They were middle school teachers. And she never let it stop her. She, she taught for 42 years before they retired. And when she retired, um, she, she wasn't ready to give it up. So she actually went to University of Indianapolis and did night classes there. So my dad was all ready to retire. He was all in on retirement, but she's like, I just, she wasn't ready to hang it up and she never did. She worked up until the time she passed.
Wow. So she's working the entire time and she's got cancer as well. So when she was going through radiation, was she still showing up to teach?
Yeah. So she, she decided against radiation. She did the chemo. Okay. But a lot of, you know, blood transfusions and infusions of iron and all sorts of other things that she had to go through. And she had a couple of surgeries just because of how, you know, when your, your blood isn't working right and doesn't carry the right amount of oxygen. It's not, you know, perfusing your body correctly, then you have some problems. And so she, you know, she had a spinal surgery, she had a hip replacement. I mean, just all these other things that kind of um, added on. But even with her and her little cane, she uh, she had that servant's heart. Like I remember her bringing like these big crock pots full of like chicken soup uh, to her students at night. Cause she's like, these are night students. They've worked all day or they've been doing something all day long. And then they're coming here at night and they haven't eaten. So she would feed them. And that was her heart. And I just feel like if I could be half the woman that she was, then I, then I'm doing all right. And so I think that's kind of that, that origin story and why I chose the paths that I did in um, in, in service. And you know, very interested, obviously in medical. So that's why I served as a medic in the military. I did that for at least 19 of the years before I went to human resources. Um, and did that for a few years until I commissioned. So when I took my job at Lilly, I had to resign my, my active duty guard position. Cause uh, you know, I wanted to take this opportunity of a lifetime. That's what it felt like to me to, to get accepted at Lilly. But I stayed in the guard and I went ahead and, and took my direct commission to become a medical service officer. So thrown back into the medical world again, uh, and I absolutely loved it there um, as, as a medical service officer. But I kind of, at, at some point, you know, after 24 years, I felt like I need to focus more on, you know, what's ahead of me, not what's behind me. And that's why I decided to go ahead and leave, leave the military to the younger ones and, and do something different with my life.
That is awesome. So at Lilly now, the role that you're in is a leadership type role, correct? So do you teach leadership or?
Yeah. So I'm actually, I'm, I'm an individual contributor there. Uh, so I don't have people underneath me at Lilly, but I like formally. But I, I teach leadership. So specifically I have first level leader training. All the people who come to Lilly, um, who have been a leader somewhere else, but maybe not at Lilly. I need to learn the Lilly way of, of leading and all the different ins and outs of the human resources part of it. Or somebody who's been an individual contributor who's just now learning how to lead. So there's different paths for that and different courses that you need to take. And I, I arrange for all that. I facilitate a lot of that. I also do uh, you know, one-on-one coaching with executive leaders and, and do a lot of custom content for teams. If they're trying to work on something specific, like maybe they're trying to work on building trust within the team or team effectiveness or communication. So I'll work on um, what content they need and then bring that to their team.
What's something that a lot of the leaders of the organization, let's say like CEOs or team leads of some type of department? What do they typically lack when they come to you and say, hey, we need to build trust with these, these people that are working for us? What is something that you notice?
Sometimes uh, there's, there's a lot of, because we work in a matrix, there's uh, there's not like a clear hierarchical structure. And so there may be times where uh, if you're a mid-level leader, for, for example, um, you know, somebody from this department is asking and putting these demands on, on you for this. And then somebody from this department is asking and putting new demands on this for this. And then you have another supervisor up here and they don't really realize that you have all these other things going on and um, maybe competing priorities. So competing priorities, I'd say was probably one of the biggest things. And then it's not communicating that. People afraid to communicate that. So that's where kind of the trust comes in is having that, that psychological safety at work. So we work a lot with um, what we call team effectiveness. And you know, what is, you know, as a leader, asking, you know, your subordinates, asking your team, you know, if I could do one thing to make your life easier. If I could do one thing to make you more effective at your job, what would that be? And asking for that feed forward, we call it feed forward rather than feedback. Feedback is a judgment on something that, that has been done in the past. And it's great, but it doesn't really tell you how to get better. So feed forward, you're asking, what can I do in the future to make this better?
Why would an organization want something like that? The leadership role that you take?
Why would they want the role? Um, they want their leaders to be better. They want their leaders to be able to, to manage these teams and lead these teams to do amazing things. We have so much potential in these next few years at Lilly. I mean, that, that they haven't in the past. I always have, but right now we have, it's, it's amped up. We have, we have a lot of really good things on the horizon and different medicines that are, you know, awaiting approval. And as we charge into that, and there's so many, again, competing priorities, we want to make sure that our leaders are able to handle that pressure, able to handle that stress and able to take care of their teams and manage the change, manage the, the workflow with all that. And you know, to do that, you have to have good leaders.
What is it that you specifically bring to the table for the instruction on leadership?
I have a, I have a pretty unique perspective from some of my, my past experience as a leader in, in the military. I went through all the different ranks from, you know, regular enlisted Joe to being um, you know, what they call an E5 or a sergeant, all the way to a master sergeant, which is an E8. Um, so I served in all those ranks and all those different levels as either a squad leader to a platoon sergeant, to a um, you know, a unit like readiness and CO, which is somebody just kind of takes care of the entire unit. Um, and then finally as a platoon leader. So there's lots of different levels within that where you have, I'd have anywhere from four people I'm in charge of to, you know, 72. So.
That's a lot of people.
Yeah. So you have to be able to delegate. You have to be able to um, you know, you don't, you don't obviously have to contact all, all 72 people. If something comes out, you delegate, you have a tree of how that works. And um, so that the organization of that and the um, just kind of understanding what people need. I think, I think some of our executives, if we look at um, you know, it's a very scientific background at Lilly, right? So we have some people who come from a very, um, and not to say this is across the board because it's not. There are some people who are a little bit more introverted. They're very um, into the science. They're amazing what they do, but they're not necessarily people persons. And so trying to teach somebody who might be in that situation, it's not very people person oriented, how to communicate with their team, how to be effective in, in meetings and how to listen when somebody's having a hard time and have that kind of empathy and, and take that time to do that, because working with people takes a lot of time.
Oh, and it's tough.
So uh, it's just kind of working with the different types of personalities, the different types of backgrounds. And um, you know, even at Lilly now, it's working with a lot of different cultural changes too. Like there's, there's different cultures who, who do things differently. You know, some require a lot of, you know, small talk before you get started on work, because it's rude to, to just jump right into work. Where other cultures, they don't want the small talk. They want to jump right into work and it's just kind of knowing what is what. So it's, it's really interesting and, and I, I enjoy the people part of things. My, my degree is in mental health counseling. That's what my masters is. And my, my, my bachelor's is in psychology. So I've always enjoyed the people part of things.
Are you, are those the only degrees that you have? It sounds like you would have a lot more.
They are. Well, you know, it's funny, because uh, you know, originally when I joined the military, I was a, I was a sophomore in college. Well, going into my junior year and uh, I just couldn't afford it anymore. And my parents were teachers. They couldn't help me with school. So I was working a whole bunch of little part-time jobs and it just wasn't, wasn't getting it cut. So I, that's when I joined, joined the military to help me pay for college. And then the wife happened and it took me a little bit longer, you know, I got married. I had, had a kid, but I was taking classes the whole time. I finally finished my undergrad. Um, and I, my mom got, got to see me finish my undergrad, but I, I didn't walk because I had my daughter Anna two weeks after I would have graduated. So after my graduation date, so I was very, very pregnant. Um, so I know, I didn't walk for that. And then when I got my masters, my mom had passed, but I um, I didn't, I didn't walk then. What I did was I took my, instead of spending the money on that type of thing, um, I took my kids to Disney World. Cause that was more fun to me.
How many times, have you been to Disney World more than, more than once or you?
Yeah, yeah. I think I've taken them for maybe four times.
You want to take me? Like, I've only heard amazing things about it.
Yeah. Uh, I took my parents once, like before they passed, before my mom passed, uh, we went, because I thought I was deploying. I was supposed to go uh, with uh, the aviation brigade. And this was around 2008-ish, 2009, I was supposed to go. So we're ramping up and I'm like, okay, I want to take my family on a trip before we go. So we, because the kids, they were going to watch my kids while I went. And um, then I, I ended up getting my, my AGR position and they took me off, off the list. So I didn't end up going, but we had, at least we got that really good trip at Disney.
You had to go doing that. What was your favorite part at Disney?
Uh, I liked the animal kingdom.
Is this in Florida?
Yeah.
You went, okay. So it's Disney World.
Yeah, Disney World.
Is Florida.
Yes, in Disneyland. Yeah.
It's California.
It's California.
Is it Anaheim, Calif- where is it?
I'm not really quite sure.
Great.
I, I, I think I went to it once when I was really young. I want, I want to say it's closer to like San Diego.
And that's the original one, right? I think it's the original, because that's where they built that big tree.
Well, the big trees in Florida.
The big trees in Florida too.
Yeah, there's a huge tree in Florida. It's in Animal Kingdom. And the, my favorite part of Animal Kingdom, there's, there's two things. There's the um, there's like a safari that you go on. And you're actually, you're in this like safari type vehicle and all the animals are just loose. Like they're not in cages. So like, they, they have some natural like barriers, like water ditches and things like that to keep the lions from going over. But I remember, I got video of it somewhere. There is a, a rhino that was charging at us because we were stuck behind another vehicle. He was trying to get over like some water or whatever, but there were some animals in the way. So like you, like the giraffes are coming through, like you, they're right there. Like you could almost touch them.
That is so cool.
That was, so that's probably my favorite part. That and the, the Lion King, they do a Lion King performance. It's amazing. So.
That is really cool. My brother, he got the experience, because one of our old neighbor, one of our neighbors that we grew up with, did an internship at Disneyland, the one in Florida.
World.
Disney World.
Yeah.
And so he got to do the whole backstage, like touring and stuff like that. So he got to see like the guy who does Crush. There's like multiple people that do Crush. And for those of you who don't know who Crush is, you're for one, I can't believe you don't know who Crush is. He's from Finding Nemo. He's the turtle.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. He's the Finding Nemo from Turtle. So like, or he's the, he's the turtle from Finding Nemo.
Yes.
But he uh, was standing backstage with the guy and it's a screen they could see through all to the kids. And then the guy's got a, you know, remote control. He can control Crush and he's like live, like swimming around, spinning and like, he's doing the voice, he's speaking through him and he's pointing out kids and stuff like that. So he's like, you in the orange shirt, what's your name? And then he's doing all that. And he's like, it was so much fun hanging out in the back and seeing all what they do. Just the animatronics behind it, the robots, like all that stuff. It was just, it was so cool to hear about all of his experiences from there. But I've always wanted to go. I just don't want to spend the money for it, because I've heard it's expensive.
I want to do one of the, the marathons or you do like the, the 5K, the 10K and the, the half marathon.
I've never heard of that.
They have one that has a full marathon too, but I think my full marathon days are over.
At Disney World? What?
Yeah. And you get like the goofy challenge medal and everything. They get, yeah, oh yeah. I'm all about the bling when you go do the runs.
So do you do a lot of running?
I do, I do. Uh, I did one, one full marathon, uh, and I tried to do another a couple of years later. So the year I turned 40, I told myself that this is a goal for me. So I went through the whole training program and it's a lot, it's a lot. Like you have to plan your whole week around that run, that long run. When you get up to doing like 15, 16, 17, 18 miles on your own, trying to plan out where the routes that you're going to run, the, um, making sure you have like the nutrition. So like the jelly beans or, you know, gummy bears or something, um, your water and having that kind of planned out prior to the weather, all of those things. So it was, it was a lot to, to get me ready to do the full. Um, and I did and, and it was great. And when I finished, I thought I could do that better. So like I, I feel like I still have some energy left. I could have done that better. And so, you know, that was, that became my goal. So like a year, I took a year off from, from doing a full. I did, I did a couple of halves. But then I decided I was going to do another one and then I started having some, some knee problems. I ended up having, having knee surgery and.
What is it you had the issue of?
Just uh, some, some cartilage in my knee. It'd been kind of, kind of torn up. So they went through and shaved a little bit that off. And um, you know, they were able to fix it orthoscopically. So I didn't have to do a whole lot, but yeah. But since then, I'm like, okay, all right, body's telling me probably not that. But I do, I still do the half marathons. It's a good distance and you don't have to train as long or as hard, I don't think for those, um, at least for me.
So you still do a lot of challenging stuff?
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I have that kind of mindset that a body in motion stays in motion. And uh, you know, I know how hard things were for my mom to, to get up and get moving and all the, the pain that she went through. And it's like, it's a quality of life thing for me. Like I want to move as much as possible, knowing, you know, yeah, I still have aches and pains like everybody else. I think you get to be my age, everybody, everybody does something to look forward to. But uh, but as long as I keep moving it, it, you know, if I have to have a surgery here, a surgery there, then physical therapy or whatever, then, then I should heal faster.
Well, with all of this moving you've been doing, I've noticed recently, you just went to a meeting, a caucus meeting and you were voted in for the at-large position for Greenwood City Council. Is that true?
That, that is. It's very true.
Why?
You know, it, it's, it's funny. I, I talked to a friend of mine um, about, you know, service and, and running and, and what that, what that might look like. Like what are the next steps for me? Now that I've, you know, retired from the military and, you know, it was kind of brought up as a, you know, this might be a good idea. Like there's this, you know, election coming up. There's this open seat. Let's see, let's see where it goes. So uh, we just decided to go for it. And after talking to some of the, the party members, they informed me about this caucus that um, there was a position that had been vacant, vacated because the person sitting in it currently took a position where he could no longer do both. And so that meant the seat was open for the remainder of this year. And it would go up for reelection this year for, next year for the next four years. So as I'm running for the next four years, I could go ahead and put my name in the hat for this current vacancy, vacant seat. And that's what the caucus was on Thursday night. It was to fill that vacant seat. So I applied for it and uh, I showed up with, uh, there were six of us total who applied for that vacancy. And we, you know, made our speech to the, to the group, to the committee. And then the voted, the voting began. That's how they, that's how they.
And these are all the leaders of the county?
Yes, there, there is a county um, party members that are, that are part of that voting committee.
Okay. So these are the people who were voted in by the civilians in Johnson County or in Greenwood and respective cities, that these are their representatives, that someone needs to fill this spot now. We can't hold an election for this. So we're going to go ahead and vote this person in with retrospect of what our citizens would want.
Yes, yes. And then, so eventually, um, you know, while I, while I now fill that seat and I got, I got sworn in right there. They had the judge there and everything. So it was all very, very fast. Um, now I'll hold the seat for the rest of this year, but I s- I'm still running for the next four years.
So why, why do you think you're the best candidate for it?
I, I think the same reason why I'm, I was the best candidate for my job at Lilly. I, I bring a unique perspective. Um, I, I have some, some training and some background in leadership. I have uh, some life experiences that, that I can bring to the table. And I, because I haven't been really in politics long, you know, in the military, we weren't allowed to, you know, join like public offices, at least not, not in active duty, you weren't allowed to. So I mean, you're obviously allowed to vote and things like that, but you had to be kind of, yeah. So you, you can't hold, like I wouldn't have been able to, to run for city council as an active duty military member. You can, I think if, as a traditional, but it's just the rules get a little fuzzy. So I just stayed away from it. Um, so it's just to not do anything inappropriate. But I think that's kind of what I bring is that, that fresh perspective. And you know, I, I care so much about, you know, our, our public safety, our, our firefighters, our police officers, the way that um, that this city is perceived. You know, there's just been so much lately with, you know, the shootings at the mall. And um, it's just, it's scary because I, I, my kids live here too. You know, I live here, my kids live here. I want this to be an amazing place for amazing families. Um, and it, and it is, and it, and it needs to stay that way. So we need to kind of figure out what those gaps are. And that's what's interesting to me is to figure out what those gaps are and how we can fix that.
That is definitely something, because I grew up here in Greenwood. So my entire life, I mean, I was born in Cincinnati and then moved here at a very young age. So I remember Greenwood as like nothing happens in Greenwood. Like there's never, like I never hear of crime. I never hear, because my mom and dad would always tell us like, well, when the street lights come on, come home. And we never had to worry about hardly anything at all. But now, like I never see kids out running around. Yeah. Like, and I, I live just the town just south of Greenwood now, but I'm in Greenwood all the time. It's hard to see. It's, it's rare for me to see kids out and about now.
Yeah.
And obviously the world does change and I'm not saying only because of, you know, any certain administration of crime increases specifically for that reason. I do think that COVID did not help with that. Obviously bringing people like keeping them at home and like kids getting into more kind of garbage and the way media is now and the way that culture is now and the disgusting music out there. And uh, I think that also does a lot of work too. But it's not like how it used to be when I grew up. So I respect your perspective on that and your want to bring it back to where it used to be like that. But there also does need to be growth in a city. So do you, do you see that a respective growth that does need to happen? And with that growth, do you think that there will be negative that comes along with it, i.e. more crime? Cause there's more people coming in.
I, I agree that we obviously, you know, growth is, is definitely going to happen. It's already happening. I mean, if you, everywhere you look throughout Greenwood, you see, you know, housing developments or, or apartments or, or things going up. And but with those, with that influx of people, also comes an influx in need of fire, police and you know, EMS, like all those services need to be growing. And from my understanding is, we actually have one less firefighter now than we had 10 years ago, but we've grown by what, 15,000 people? So we're not growing at the same level um, that the population is growing and that's a, that's a fear.
Do you think that education to the public would really help? So like if, when you're in this position now, the at-large part of the city council, educating the other council members and the civilians that would come in, or if you were able to give a public message to them. Do you think that would help out with the increase of first responders?
I think.
Or the buy-in at least.
Yeah, I think it helps with buy-in. I don't know that it, that we'd be able to magic that one to make it happen. But I think uh, I think if, if the public understands kind of what, what the, I mean, if it, if it weren't brought to my attention, I would have known either that, that the fire department was understaffed or that the, the police department was maybe understaffed for the populate, the size population that we have. So I, I think if the public knew more about those things, then you know, they'd be more interested in figuring out, okay, well, how do we make that happen? And, and who are the players that can help make that happen?
I do have a question that just popped into my head. Since you did this whole leadership stuff at Lilly, are you, you're still going to be keeping your position there at Lilly, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So you'll be keeping that position there. Do you think that there would be the opportunity for you to give, I wouldn't say free, because that's not, I don't want to put you into a bubble of something, leadership courses or assisting for the departments? Not just for first responders like police and fire, but also for like street parks, all of them, like for, for the city?
I'm, I'm happy to get, I, I don't know, I come up and talking to people, especially about leadership, because it's a, it's a passionate topic for myself. And um, so if there's a need out there that I can help fill, I'm, I'm happy to have that, that talk. And I'm happy to, you know, obviously I can't use like Lilly materials, but I can develop my own. Cause that's part of what I do there too, is develop materials and develop content.
Why do you think people in those types of roles, like the leadership roles that are higher up, don't ask for help?
I think leaders think that they are supposed to know all the answers and that's not true. You don't have to know all the answers. You just have to know your people and know how to distribute those questions. If you get the right people and the right resources, uh, cause you know, it's, it's amazing, especially at a place like Lilly. There's brilliant, brilliant people. Uh, and as a manager, you just need to know who are the right, the right person is or the right team to go ask those questions. You don't have to know the answer yourself.
What's the benefit to delegating? What's the benefit to delegating?
When you delegate, not only are you taking stuff off your shoulders, that's not really the biggest part of it, but you are empowering somebody else to learn. Leaders should be creating leaders. And the only way you do that is you give them increased responsibility. Uh, so an example right now, I am not in a formal leadership role where I am, I teach leadership, but I am not in a formal leadership role. But I am leading a team through like a re kind of redeveloping and reimagining our first level leader program currently. And, you know, what is it that new leaders need to know and, you know, what format is best, whether it's a computer-based training or, you know, a a live or. You know, a video conference, those types of decisions and, you know, what is going to be like a simulation versus what is lecture, those types of things. So I'm leading a team right now and it's a global team on how to reimagine that. So you, there's informal leadership roles that I was delegated. Into to to grow and develop me.
You said a global team, like for Lily?
Yeah, so.
For the entire world?
Yes, so Lily is a is a global company. Um, and so I have learning and development or we call L and D. Um, staff, like we we have them all over the world because we have, you know, in China, in Japan and. Australia and all throughout Europe and so.
So cool.
You, while I'm only one person and I teach most of, most of the classes I teach are US-based, although other people from other countries are welcome to join, it's not usually on their timeframe. So like in order to get it in their time zone, in order to get them in their local language languages, I do a lot of what they call train the trainers. So whatever it is that I teach, I teach other teachers how to teach it so that they can go and do it in their local areas.
That is so cool. So you obviously have to learn a lot about their their cultures. So like when you go to speak was. I can't tell that story, but. So we had a fire, I won't tell the whole story, I'll tell a part of it. We had a fire in a certain area uh for a different culture. And I know that there are certain things that you shouldn't shouldn't do. And as a joke, I told one of the guys, like, hey, go do this. And I knew that it wasn't like, it's not a. It's not like completely against their culture, but it's just like kind of frowned upon, like, oh, you don't talk to the woman first, like you talk to the man. Like, hey, she's the owner. And then I knew he'd just go over and talk to him. But it was, it was kind of funny, but then all of these guys surrounded him and I was like, hey, man, I told you the wrong thing on purpose to be funny, but.
Kind of like the rules of engagement they teach you before you deploy, like you do not, yeah.
Yeah, I should have, I should have been a little, and I even told her, I said, I am so sorry, I just did it as a joke. It was kind of a failure, but I think that is so cool that it affects other comp- not that it's the same company, but affects others in a global aspect. So it's much bigger than you here in Indianapolis. It's it's just, it's all over, which I find that so interesting.
Yeah, it blew my mind when I first started because I get I came from small town too, right? Um. And now I sit on these conference calls and and I could have people in all different accents, all different. Like, it's just, they're in all different locations all at the same time. So, you know, I'll have somebody on from China and somebody on from Poland and somebody on. You know, from Australia and it's just, just listening. Uh, and and seeing their little faces, you know, on the computer screen is just, it's, it blows my mind sometimes because it's it's not the world that I grew up in and. Um, it's it's fascinating. I I again, I love people and I love learning about people and that's, you know, again, part of my journey.
Do you ever get to learn any parts of their languages?
Yeah, yeah, uh, I know we had a a an action, what they call an action learning program where we took some corporate MBAs. And brought them into corporate center where where I work normally and gave them a a like a real world pro- problem to solve. And we led them through this like two-week intensive, like they are solving this problem, so they have interviews and focus groups and all this kind of stuff to try to get the data they need to. To come up with a recommendation at the end for the executive sponsor. And uh, we had one um flying from China, one flying from Poland and. Um, the rest of them were were US-based, but it was just, it's just interesting. They come in and bring parts of their culture and we would show them parts of ours and.
But you got this Burger King, bro.
Yeah, well, uh, our friend from China and got to go uh snowboarding over the weekend in between Perfect North, one of the. The US-based ticker out there, so it was really cool.
That is really cool. Well, I had a friend of ours uh that I met through uh a friend of my my brother and his friend. He works for Enders Hauser, which is a Swiss company. So he comes here every once in a while and now he won't be back here for another five or six years. But when I met him, we went out and had dinner and at the end of it, he goes, hey, I want you to, and and his Swiss German accent. He's like, I I want you to sign something before I go back. And he got me some gifts and stuff. I have them around here somewhere. There's one of them's over there, another one's back out there. Um, a couple of them are, I think, down there. No, they're in another room. But he had me sign the American flag. And I've been trying to ask her out, I'm like, is it disrespectful to sign the American flag? Like, do you know if it is or is it?
I I think a soldier would say yes.
Well, good thing I'm not a soldier, so, but when he said, hey, I want you to sign this and I'm like, uh. And I've saw other signatures on it and he's like, I'm just having everyone sign it. I'm like, man, I don't know if I should. But I'm excited at the top if I am, dude, I'm going all out with this. But it was still, it was so cool because that's, to him, he's like, America's like. Is the dream place to live. He said, even though like my country's beautiful, like where he lives in a little village, like it's gorgeous, but like. He goes, you could do whatever you want here. You guys are completely free. And I'm like, well, we're not completely free, like, we can't do everything. Like, there's more stuff that I still want to do that I just can't do. But to see someone else view our culture that way is. Is really honoring to me because it just brings more um. More of a view to myself that I'm like, maybe I I need to be a little bit more like appreciative of this country.
Well, I think I think a big part of that comes in just travel, travel the world a little bit and kind of see um. How other people live. I know um the girls and I, my my daughters, we went to Europe. Not this last year, but the year before, over over Christmas and they got to see some of that history and the architecture and all that kind of stuff and then. This past winter, like, so we we try to go on vacation over Christmas break sometime and that's kind of our big Christmas gifts, rather than buying things, it's more about experiences. So this last year, we went to the Bahamas and and they got to see a little bit of that and that type of culture and try the different foods and the mu- different music and all those types of things. So I'm trying to expose them a little bit more to everything. And then this year, um, my goal, and and I gotta make sure it happens this year, cause last year got canceled. Uh, we we were gonna go on a mission trip to Guatemala.
Oh, that's awesome.
So um and that that will be pretty pivotal. Uh, I think for them to understand the differences in the the cultures and the. You know, that not everybody is as blessed as we are. And uh, in this particular mission, they go to, it's a. They build houses for widows, um, but there's also orphans and the orphans and the widows take care of each other.
What's the company called or the mission called?
Um, it is called uh What Matters Most is what it's called. It's What Matters Most. And I'll have to look up the the website, but. We were all set to go last year, um, but because and we were supposed to go June of last year, but then all of the airlines were having like. Some major problems and shortages and everything and they just canceled a whole bunch of flights and they canceled all of our flights. And we couldn't get everybody over there. We would have missed more than half the week to even get over there, so they went ahead and just canceled the whole thing.
That sucks.
So, yeah, we were so, and this was the night before we were supposed to leave. We were packed, we were ready to go and the night before we were supposed to leave, we found out all of our flights were canceled. So hopefully, we can make it happen this year.
Well, I hope so too. Like, there was a com- there was one that I did one for, I did two of them uh called Casas Pro Cristo. And it's Houses for Christ. And it was really for orphans, which always killed with the ladies when I would tell them, like, oh, I went and built houses for orphans. We're like, oh, my God, that's so sweet, but it's. It was something I did for two years straight and that, well, two years in a row and I wanted to adopt some of those kids so bad, but like. The poorest people here in the United States that I've noticed, like, from what I've seen myself. The poorest people here still had it so much better than those that live average in the state of the province of Chihuahua, like. They had parts of just random pieces of metal to cover like the walls in the house. And they had, one of them was living in a a chopped up bus and a whole family was living in it, like they, the inside, they had a little kitchen. They had just the roof of the bus with the windows part, but they didn't have walls. They just had like two by fours and random pieces of sticks to hold it up. They didn't have running water. Like, it was, the church there was where everybody was able to. Get a lot of nicer amenities and supplies and like shelter, real shelter. So it was really a blessing when I went there and I'm like. And I'm complaining about my wifi, like, these people don't, they prob- I mean, they know what wifi is on this and they had cell phones and stuff, but it's like, they just don't have the amenities here, like. I have this comparative to them, I have a giant house. It's not very big, but like, it's amazing to compare cultures like that.
Yeah, I think it's, that's what gives you perspective, you know, um, a friend of mine would say, you know. You know, are you having a good day? How's your day going? And say, well, you know, day's going great, nobody's shooting at me. And that's a soldier's perspective. You know, somebody who's seen combat a few times, nobody's shooting at me, so of course I'm having a great day. It's perspective and. Um, somebody who's been on a on a mission trip or has been to some places that are third world, you know, they. They can see the difference between what's a first world problem and what's not. And, you know, much, much of what we solve here or what you what we operate in here are first world problems. So my my cellphone's not working right or, you know, my, I can't get my GPS to come up, whatever it is and um. You know, just having that perspective of, there's there's so much else out there that, you know, that we could affect or be working about or. Be worried about, I guess.
There was, there was one time I was complaining, I sent a text message to a friend of mine and it was taking forever to send. And the guy called me, he's like, that's cause your Android phone. And I was sitting there and I was just, I was kind of mad about it. It's not my Android, my Android's way better than anything else out there. I'm kidding. Hey, by the way, Apple uh podcasts, uh, you guys are like the majority of my listeners, so I am sorry for talking trash, but it's true. I'm not, no, I I, you know, your your phone, your Apple phone is basically a Samsung. But um. I was sitting there and he goes, do you know you're sending a message into outer space and it's returning back in seconds? And you're complaining that it's taking a little longer? And I'm like, yeah, like, this is going to outer space and back, like, I'm sorry. Like, this is pretty cool. Uh, we need to get back to that topic of the uh city council stuff. So. What what are you most excited about working on the city council?
I'm excited about learning what some of the um most pressing issues are for the citizens of of Greenwood. What are the things that we can affect in the city council? Um, and really just um. Uh, it's gonna be a a learning curve at first, just kind of understanding how how that process works, cause again, this is, this is all very new for me. Um, but I'm a quick learner, so I I have faith that it is that's something I'll be able to handle. Um. But I think that's the part that I look forward to the most is, I I mean, I'm working with a t- a team, it's working with a new team, so there's gonna be. You know, that part of the learning curve as well. But uh, I'm excited, I'm excited to get started and I think that this time here, these. You know, cause it's only February, so I've got this whole year uh to really kind of learn and soak things up. So by the time. I would start again, should I get elected for, you know, the next term, you know, I I would have a very good understanding of how everything is, works.
Something that I've just been wondering about is, do you have plans or even have you even thought about? Trying to interact more with the public or getting them interested in these meetings?
Yeah, so, you know, part of, part of my plan, my election plan, obviously, I'll be doing some some door-to-door um. Meeting people and just kind of really getting out into the community and I'm hoping for some warmer weather to do so. Selfishly.
Yeah, what is it today? Is it like eleven degrees out today?
I think it's supposed to get to forty-four, so.
Oh, that's, that's T-shirt weather almost. Oh, it's twenty-eight right now.
Not for me, but.
I was wearing shorts to the store this morning.
Yeah, I just, I wanna get out there and and talk to people and and see what's on their mind. And I know that obviously there there are people who are gonna come up with things that I have no power over whatsoever. But at least understanding kind of like what the the major themes are, what the concepts are that are out there that people are concerned about and, you know. Hopefully, I can take that back and do something with it.
What is your get, your best guess of what the most concerns you'll hear about is? I know it's really tough because I'm asked, it's such a, it's per a per voter issue, but what what is your guess that you think?
I I would say safety is probably one of the things that's on people's mind, um, especially because of some of the things that have happened, you know, recently in the news. But I I think another thing, cause I I spoke to that a little bit already, but I think another thing that people might be concerned about are, there's a lot of a lot of construction. Um, and and growth and and different things happening and I think people wanna know uh what that means for them.
That is something that, if you look at the Greenwood Chatter page, is one of the biggest. And I and I highly suggest, if you're not in that page.
Oh, I am.
Okay, you are. Um, that is something that I've just, I laugh at a lot of the stuff and obviously, like, I'll make some. False news posts, like somebody in me and another person that I work with or uh, she knows who she is if she's listening. But somebody be like, what's happening at, you know, Maine and thirty-one? And then somebody will be like, shark attack, like, it was really bad, like, just stupid stuff like that, but it, there's a. Good way of getting information quickly from the public to seeing what their pressing matter is, obviously in our first world country. But it's what their issue is with the city and they just post it right then and there. And then you see everyone else tagging in, either they're they're dogging on the person for saying it. Or they're agreeing with them. So I think that's a pretty quick way. Um, an- another of my ideas is. The city doesn't normally involve themselves in the city council unless there's a problem that is initially. Cumbersome or bothering them, or specifically targets them. So how, I mean, and even the low percentage of voters that we have in the city of Greenwood. Like, what what was it for the people in Greenwood that vote out out of like sixty-four thousand people, like only forty-three hundred or forty-five hundred?
And honestly, it's it's hard to get the younger generations to to vote. Trying to get them to be interested in what's happening and and to do the research to figure out like what the different platforms are for people. I think, I think the way to tackle that is really transparency, getting the word out and and making people understand what's going on and what they can do about it. So. Uh, for instance, if we're talking about like social media, and I know for a while, I live, you know, near Honey Creek Road where the roundabout was put in. And while most of the roundabout has opened, not, there's two sections of it that are still aren't open yet because there's materials that they're waiting on. Um, because of the backlog of construction materials and everything. But nobody knew about that part. They're just like, why is this not open? This was supposed to be open. Three months ago. Why is it still, you know, under construction? And so there are people who are upset about this, but, you know. I think that transparency of somebody saying, well, you know, this, these materials are just not available yet and that's why it's taking so long and. Just simple things like that about just explaining the why. And there's a, this, I'm going back to my leadership world here, but there's a book. Uh, Simon Sinek is one of my favorite authors and he, he has a book called, um, you know, starts with why, you know, and it's just. People need to know the why. And if they know the why, then that's where they can get the the buy-in. And that's where you can get people inspired. People don't do things, um, they won't work jobs that are meaningless, that don't provide something. Uh, not for very long anyway, like you can throw money at people and they'll do something for a while, but you're not gonna be able to buy their loyalty. The reason why people stay, the reason why people want things. Is because they believe in it, they believe in the why, they are part of that and they trust it. And that's the same for the city as it is for a company. You got to make them understand the why. Why do you love Greenwood? Why do you love this city? And if you love this city. Then what can you do to help, you know, keep it growing? You gotta vote. You gotta vote for people who who are doing the things. Or will, you know, will put themselves out there to do the things that you want done for the city, so.
So it sounds like there needs to be a good marketing plan for the coun- city council or uh people in that kind of administration because like. TikTok for, for example, there's a lady in Center Grove that has a TikTok that has got amassed millions and millions of views. And if you go on her TikTok, her name is wholesome-ish mom. And uh, she actually makes some pretty decent content. I actually ran into her at Kroger once and I looked at, I was just walking and like our carts almost hit and I looked up and I'm like, I know you. And she's like, no, you don't. But she was really sweet, really nice. Um, she knows my brother and all that kind of stuff. But she makes these little videos about like. Greenwood versus Centerville versus, you know, Carmel versus all that kind of stuff and then talking about traffic and um. But it gets thousands, tens of thousands of views and people here locally will comment on it. Yeah, look, yeah, look her up and she'll get just thousands of views on. Just little videos that she makes and they're and they're kind of funny too, but it's like, it's good marketing, like if she's talking about how great Greenwood is or how great Carmel is, like. It's that buy-in of other people, like, this is how well a city's doing. Or if you sit there and say, there's always construction. Cause there is always construction, anywhere in the city, obviously, I work in that city, so like, we have to plan all the time, okay. Route of travel, if there's a fire in this area or if there's a medical run in this area, most likely medical run. In this area, you've got to plan a route of travel and that's cutting down on your travel time. It's cutting, it's cutting down on the care that you can give. To the the best of your ability because time is of the es- essence. And if for cardiac arrest, like. You add on a couple extra minutes, that's that's life or death for that person. So constantly always having. Construction around, which I think construction should be at night. That's just me. I think construction should be at night, cause that's just, I think that's better and you can just cut down on traffic. Um, I think that having that type of marketing for a city, that's gonna be huge and. Extremely beneficial for them if you're talking about the positives and if you even bring up the negatives. I think that the uh mayor of Kokomo has a podcast that they do weekly now. My friend of mine's listened to it and he's like, yeah, they talk about everything on it, but they also talk about some of the good and po- like the positives that they're doing in the city. And I think that would be really good for the people that are interested in that. Not everybody's listening to podcasts, but. If you talk about, hey, this is what's going on in our city and this is how you can help by voting this in or coming in and sitting and giving us your opinion on this. So with that being said, what is your vision? And you've said some of it, I think, but what is your vision for the city of Greenwood?
I think the, the parts about, hmm, that's a good question. You know, I, I said this in my speech and it, and it kind of keeps ringing true right now, is that Greenwood has that kind of small town feel with all the big town amenities. So we wanna keep that, right? We wanna make sure that our town looks beautiful, that it's safe, uh, that it's, it's got the, you know, the, the roads are, are paved and, and, and you're not going to, you know, lose a tire, uh.
Like if you're traveling to Indianapolis, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We won't, we won't discuss that. That's actually happened to me once and I drive a Jeep, so it takes a lot to destroy a tire on a Jeep. But um, really, you know, making it safe, making it beautiful, making it walkable. I think that's a big part of it. They put in a lot of sidewalks and that's great. Um, you know, having the businesses there. And there's some, some areas that have been re revitalized and they look great. They really do. Uh, there's some areas that still need some work. Uh, but I think to me, it's more important to do that, to, to revitalize the areas that are already built, make it walkable, make it beautiful. Before bringing more new this, more new that, we have to take care of what's there. Uh, because we, we can build this great mansion next to a, a, a stick house. You're still gonna have that stick house to look at. So how about we revitalize that, make it beautiful, make it something worthwhile?
Sounds like something that Franklin did. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, but me being, when I was a child, going into Franklin all the time, seeing how it was, like when it flooded and all that kind of stuff, seeing all the trash and everything outside. And then seeing the revitalization that it's done. I love Franklin. I was just there last night.
Travel from here to go to Franklin to go walk down and you have all those different restaurants in a row and, and uh, activities. And I, I feel like we could get that vibe here. Um, and especially as they're starting to, you know, work on these, on these projects. Rather than, rather than building a whole bunch of new other, other things, let's, let's fix what we have and make it beautiful, make it walkable, make it, you know, put in some of those small businesses, support the local business people and, and having that happen.
See, I would love, I mean, I'm obviously, you know, I'm a very young thirty-year-old man and I would love to be like, I'm gonna go to the town. And then go to, go into Greenwood and support my local businesses there. But there's not much there for me to do. So if there's not much there for me to do, there's probably a couple thousand other people that it's the same for them, but Franklin's got it. Indianapolis has got it. I go up to Mass Ave to uh, the place, is it called the Garage or something up there?
Yeah, Bottle Works.
Bottle Works, yeah. Bottle Works is awesome. I, oh my God, my uh, my captain, I went up there with him and his uh, his wife and his parents and I had so much fun. I didn't think I'd have fun.
You had to have the lobster grilled cheese.
What's that? What?
If you go in the garage, there's a, I think it's JJ's or something like that, Lobster Shack. There's a lobster place in there. And there's a lobster grilled cheese. There's a lobster mac and cheese too, but the grilled cheese is better.
Every time I've had any type of fish, lobster's not a fish. It's not, but it's, it's in the water with the fishes. But anytime I ever had that stuff, if it's not on the coast or right next to the beach, I get sick. So I try not to.
I've had it a few times not gotten sick, but maybe I just got a stronger stomach.
He might have a stronger stomach than me. That is so. Things that got me thinking about that is just, I think that marketing for the city would be great. I think building what we have at the city is great. So with, with doing all that stuff, all these fantastic ideas, I don't expect you to know every single detail of that plan or of that, that goal in your head. But obviously finance is gonna have to be something that is imperative to this. So what are some of the ideas that you have to help financially support this? And if you, if you don't know, you don't know, that's okay.
That's something I haven't learned yet. Like I'm still, um, I said, this is all very, very new to me and I'm trying to figure out how, how those things are budgeted. Yeah, so like, I, I just wanna make sure that our money is going towards things that are the most important. So you know, without getting too deep into, into the politics that I'm, that I'm still learning, um, like we have you know, taxes and there are some tax breaks that are given to larger corporations, um, to build on uh, some what they call kind of blighted, blighted land.
Yeah, like ten-year tax abatements, yeah.
Yeah, so you know what I'm talking about. So um.
I have a slight idea.
So that's, you know, how is that, I'm just trying to understand how that helps us and uh, and how that that might not help us so much. Um, you know, it's great to have, you know, a grocery store right there, but if they're only paying taxes on a very small portion, rather than like the full amount of what they, what they should be for that long, like are we taking money away from our schools? Are we taking money away from our, our local, our local area that we could be using to build up some of the other like broken down areas? I mean, I look at that, um, this isn't quite like Greenwood area, it's just right across the street from Greenwood uh, city. But um, like where that marsh is um, off of one thirty-five, that's been sitting there vacant for.
You mean the Vasa Fitness that it should be? That's what I keep saying. It should be a Vasa. That's my idea.
Is that your idea? I, I thought about like a gym or a shooting range or something fun.
A gym slash shooting range. There's one in Texas, I think. There's one in Texas where it's actually, it's amazing, it's amazing.
I see a business venture coming our way.
If I had money, I don't have money. I'm very, very poor in, you know, first world problems. But there's a gym down in Texas that's got, I believe it's got like a gym, a movie theater, a full restaurant, a shooting range, a bowling, like a bunch of stuff. Like it's got everything.
Yeah, it's kind of like a, yeah, that thing, the, the Dave and Buster's at the mall, but for adults.
Yes, yes. That's what it needs to be. It needs to be a, a Vasa Fitness where they, they kind of curtail in some uh, point blank. They need to come in together. That would be a fantastic idea. And then.
Could do some like self-defense.
And self-defense stuff, a jujitsu gym. A jujitsu gym in there, that would be great. And then, cause it'd be closer to me. And that's, and that would be fantastic. And it's what I want. But it's not what I want. But I have seen a lot of people when they talk about a visa fitness, cause my opinion, LA Fitness needs to go. I cannot stand it. I get depressed when I wa- when I walk into there with the paid membership that I have, obviously. And then it's just, it's, I don't like it there, cause they've never had any competition and they need competition and a healthy competition.
There are smaller gyms. Uh, there are, like, you know, you got your Anytime Fitness, you've got your, um.
You got MEI, but that's a little, that's a little bit up north.
Yeah, so that would be, that would be considered the, the co- the competition there. But um, I do go to LA, but that's my, my work pays for it. So.
Well, I've got an idea then. So what about something, I mean, obviously the city has the community center for them to go, uh, the employees to go and workout at. And the equipment's getting a little bit better, but what about for those that go to other gyms? Because obviously like me going to the community center, I, I'm a little bit, not, not that I'm about that, my training's a little bit different for that. But fitness is extremely important and I think fitness should be put on some of the forefront, fit, fitness and health, the forefront, especially for first responders. Have you have, do you have any ideas on fitness and health for those in those positions? Or what was it in the, let's go with, what was it in the military? And is there anything like that with Lily?
So, yes. So in the military, obviously you have to maintain certain physical standards. And I don't know, I don't know what it's like for you in your world now, but like in the military, every year you had to pass a, a physical fitness test. And you also had to pass what they call, we call it a height weight. But it's basically your body fat standard. You were only supposed to allow to have a certain amount. Um, and so if you did not reach, you know, that physical standard or that, that body fat standard, then you would have to be put on a program to, to do that. And, and meanwhile, your, your kind of punishment during that time is that you can't get promoted, you can't go to schools, mil- military schools, you can't. Because it, it, there is some sort of motivation to get you to change, right? To get you to, to conform back to the standard. And um, I don't know if there's anything like that in, in your world that there.
We do have a, like a CPAT. But obviously guys will just do it for once in the year. We do it all once in the year. And I don't know about the police, if they have anything continuing like that. I don't know if they do or not.
In the full-time world, uh, uh, as a, as a soldier, you, you know, we're allotted time during our, our shifts to go work out. And you know, we're encouraged to do so. And so, um, I think that's super helpful. Like in any kind of career, that, that physical, you know, standards are gonna be a part of it. Like obviously, you know, first responders like yourself have to be able to, you know, carry those heavy hoses, have to be able to carry people, have to be able to, you know, to lift heavy, it's, it's a physically demanding job. So any kind of physically demanding job, you should have, um, you know, kind of that, that time to, to work on yourself physically as well.
We also have the uh, for fire and police, we have this physical therapy program, which has been absolutely tremendous. And a huge improvement on our firemen and our police. I, I can tell you right now, from, from my perspective, this is something that had, like it, this is imperative for people in first, uh, that are first responders, because you're making them last longer is all you're doing. And then you, you as the, you know, you're on the city council, but also as the taxpayer, like you wanna invest in your first responders, you wanna invest into them. So I heard there was a program that you started in the military of physical fitness. Can you explain more about that?
So yeah, um, this was back in two thousand seventeen, uh, the adjutant general, uh, he's kind of our, our big boss for the National Guard, right? So he and the state sergeant major came to me and three other individuals and told us that they, he wanted us to develop a program for soldiers who struggled with making their physical fitness standards or their um, height, weight uh, standards that we're supposed to have. And, and we called it Life Fit. And what it was, is we used their annual training period, which is basically fifteen days. And it was a lot like, like The Biggest Loser, if you remember that, that television show. And you had, we had him for ten days, like ten days on the ranch is what we call it. It's at a berry, but uh, we developed the entire program ourselves. I was a, I was the NCOIC, so the, the non-commissioned officer in charge is what that means. And um, I, you know, we all kind of had our, our niche. And so I enjoyed running and I like hit workouts. So that was kind of what I brought to the table. And my friend Courtney, she's a powerlifter, so she brought that part to the table. And uh, Cody, he like was like a big tactical guy. He liked the road marches. He also ran, so that was his, his thing. And Chad was our martial arts guy. So he did all the combatives and brought in some like really fun, creative workouts using combatives type work. And so we would have them work out three times a day. So the first one is usually like a, a cardio or weightlifting. It depended on the time of year, whether it was cold or hot. So you know, and if it was light enough to run outside in, in the mornings and stuff. Uh, cause obviously safety is important, but uh, we would do one, one lifting workout, one cardio workout and then a, a walk every evening after dinner. And so for that ten days, like we controlled like their, their food and their exercise. And then we had a lot of programming in between. You know, teaching them how to write their own exercise programs, teaching them how, you know, the, kind of the physiology behind of why you work out this way. And you know, the difference between strength endurance and, and things like that. So we worked on that, you know, pretty intensely for that time. Well, then they'd go back to their lives for the next two months and then they re- return for, for another week, another five days. We would kind of talk about some of their successes. We'd talk about some of their, their weaknesses or their failures. And at that point, we're now we're addressing, okay, what are some of the issues that are, that's causing this to be a problem? Are you not being supported by the people at home? Are you not being, do you, are you unemployed or underemployed? Cause again, we're working with national guardsmen, so they're not necessarily full-time anything. Um, are you struggling financially? And then we would be able to find them the resources that they needed. So you know, if they can't afford, you know, they, they're not, you know, if they're working three or four jobs because they can't afford, you know, their life, then and they're supporting a whole family, then that's why they don't have time to work out. And then they're eating a whole bunch of junk food, but because it's fast and it's cheap. Um, how do we then, you know, get around that? So we would find financial counselors, we'd help hook them up with people to help them find better jobs, that type of stuff. And.
That is really cool.
It was, it was a pretty amazing program. And some of the things, you know, that really spoke to me is, eh, obviously you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. So not everybody, you know, came out stellar, but there are so many people who made such huge changes in their life. I'm talking dropping forty, fifty pounds in two months. Like that's a lot. Um, and uh, I, I remember one soldier came to me and said, when I came here, I was an alcoholic. I was literally drinking two cases a day. And I don't drink now. Cause we, we weren't, they were obviously, we weren't allowed to drink there. Um, we had people quit smoking. We had people quit. You know, like really make some big changes. I, I know one kid, he was, he was like twenty-three, he was living at home, working at Burger King, nothing wrong with that. But after he finished our program, he, he did pass his PT test. That's all he needed to do was, was get, get better on that. Ended up finding a, a full-time job with the guard. Um, you know, his parents saw the effort he was making into things. They bought him a bicycle so he can exercise. Like it was this huge shift. Now he's married with a child, works full-time for the guard. Like, there's just a complete life shift from where he was to where he went. And a lot of it's just, again, this is the people part of things, is trying to figure out what's going on, what's, what's really at the, at the crux of of why you've given up in this area and what can we do to try to fix it?
If there were to be something that you would want to share with anybody who is listening or watching this about your new position at the, as at-large city council member, what would that be?
Come talk to me. Let me know what it is that you, that, you know, that you care about here in Greenwood and what you would like to see done. Cause I, I really wanna be a voice for the people. Um, but I also wanna explain the why. So if somebody is like really upset about why something happened or why something didn't happen, like whether decisions that were made and why those decisions were made. I think that transparency is important. So that's, that's what I wanted to know.
Do you think transfer, this will be the last question that we can finish up here. Um, do you think transparency for those who who do put a stop to certain things, do you think not name-calling them, but, but calling them out and saying this is who's the person that stopped it? Or this is that person's job? Do you think that that puts a better light on not just the position that you're in? But also for the council, if we hold people to those, their responsible roles?
Oh yeah. I mean, and everything should really be public record anyway. So all those meetings are, are recorded. And you're welcome to attend, given um, as a, as a, as a citizen. So I encourage people to get involved. I think that's you know, kind of part of the problem is so many people aren't involved and they don't know and you can get your news off of social media, but that isn't always necessarily, you know, the truth. So if you really, really wanna know and you really want to, to make something happen or fix something, then you have to get involved yourself. And you have to really figure out who, who said what and it's all a matter of public record.
That's awesome. Thank you so much for spending this little over an hour with me and talking on the podcast and educating me on who you were. Um, so real quick, where can people find you at? Uh, so that way they can follow your journey and your campaign as well?
Sure, yeah. They can find me on Facebook. It is Erin, like E R I N, for the number four and then Greenwood. Uh, and then also they can email me at Erin, E R I N, for the number four, Greenwood at gmail dot com.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much. I really do appreciate it. It means a lot to me and also for my viewers and listeners as well. And I really wish you the best of luck with your campaign.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me.
There you have it, folks. We've reached the very end of the podcast. Thank you so much for tuning in all the way until the very end. It does mean a lot to me. I really do appreciate that. So what'd you guys take away from this? Did you guys appreciate what she had to say about the city of Greenwood? I mean, she's gonna be, she is running and campaigning for the city council spot for the next four years. So I really hope that you guys share this with other uh, people who live in the city of Greenwood. That way they could be more educated on who these people are running for these positions. There's a lot of good things that can come out of uh, being on city council. There's a lot of great things and there's, there's bad things that come out of it as well. So with learning all what we did about Erin, who are you gonna be voting for in this next election? If you would like to contact her, I will post her socia's down beneath in the description on YouTube. But also don't forget that uh, she did mention where you can find her. So I really hope that you guys enjoyed the episode and I hope you all have a blessed day.